Deputy Mayor Marks.
Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. It's our regular meeting for July 19th, Tuesday at 1 o'clock. Welcome, everyone. Roll call. I will note that Fiona Counselor Wynn is absent today. I will note that Mayor Martin is physically unable to attend the meeting but is attending on on Zoom and has asked me to conduct the meeting, which I'm happy to do. First item up is disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. And I note none. Traditional land use acknowledgement statement. Sorry. Oh, certainly, I have to disclose closed session, item three. I will leave the room when that's being discussed. Thank you for that. Traditional land use acknowledgement statement. Municipality of Central Elgin would like to acknowledge that we gather on the land of the McKee Purchase, the traditional territory of the Hodensani, Atawandronk, Neutral, and the Mississauga Nation. The adoption of minutes of the previous meeting. We have a motion for that. If there's. Go ahead and read that, please.
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Monday, June the 27th, 2022 be adopted.
Are there any errors or omissions that anyone's noted? If not, you'll call them both, please.
Certainly. Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we wrap delegations, and we do have two delegations today. The first one is concerning industrial development, loss of prime farmland. You have Stephen Greidennis, Tom Martin, Diane Dubois, and Jeff Davis will be in attendance to express concerns about industrial development, loss of prime farmland, and the use of non-disclosure agreements. Mr. Perrin, are they here?
Mr. Chair, I have Diane Dubois and a Steve, you know, because I'm not sure who speaks. So if they could raise their hand, so I could let them in.
There's a hand, Diane. Diane, welcome.
Actually, I'm here with my husband, Tom Martin, and Tom will speak first.
All right.
And then Steve will speak after Tom, and I will speak after Steve.
All right, I want to, first, I want to welcome you, and I think you've already been informed, there's a 10-minute delegation time. Please go ahead whenever you're ready, and we're listening.
Okay. Over the last, yeah, how's it going? Over the last winter, we've been hearing rumors about a large block of farmland sold northeast of St. Thomas, which could be used to attract a large mega business. We've not been able to talk to our elected officials or the staff. This is an unprecedented infringement on the rights of taxpayers of Central Elgin, forced on us through non-disclosure agreements. This is a large block of land. It's Class 1 agricultural land, including pristine southern Ontario forests. Apparently, this was a super-secret competition by Industry Minister Rick Fidelli, and Central Elgin submitted a proposal for the long-deglected industrial area east of Centennial Avenue. We've been told that it was a ministry idea to move the location one mile north, so that Central Elgin would have to partner with St. Thomas. Now, we're not absolutely sure of that. It'd be nice to be enlightened. Over the winter, most of the farms were purchased with a minimum guaranteed deposit should the project not proceed as anticipated. What exactly does Central Elgin get out of this deal? Is my home of six generations next to go? When will you be able to openly talk to me about this proposed development? And how do I officially declare my opposition to rezoning of farmland? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm not sure whether Steve is online right now or not.
I am. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, adding to the points that Tom's just brought up, I'd like to bring forward concerns regarding traffic, specifically on Yarmouth Center Road, which is a critical road for agricultural vehicles of various kinds and for a number of farmers at various points along Yarmouth and adjoining land. And as well, Yarmouth is also critical, as you know, for fire traffic. We want to know if there are plans going forward or if there have been plans already made, an assessment made, and notification made to farmers about potential impacts to the, to Yarmouth Center Road. And the, you know, the potential for dramatic impact on the quality of life for adjoining farm families. Added to that, I'd also like to bring forward a question about the woodlots that are in this designated area that's being repurposed as industrial. Will the county of Elgin bylaws be respected in terms of not cutting down the trees if the land is owned by St. Thomas? Will comprehensive environmental?
Excuse me, Steve.
Yeah.
One thing I will have to insist on, we will, we have to keep the comments to Central Elgin. We can control them, give you information, but other municipalities, you're going to have to ask those questions of them. Sorry you interrupted.
Sure, sure. No, understood, understood. So that is a question that we, we believe, because the land is currently County of Elgin, we'd like to know, you know, if County of Elgin has a say, if this land is being purchased and will become part of St. Thomas, what does that do? We'd be, again, given the secrecy, secrecy that Tom has mentioned, we're completely in the dark as to what.
Steve, unfortunately, your internet is cutting out.
Then be done regarding noise levels, air quality, the right to farm. That's it. Diane, I'll hand over to you.
Well.
Go ahead.
So, so we're really not opposed to industrial development in Central Elgin, but, but we want to know, like, why is St. Thomas's industrial development more important than our agricultural rural businesses? And we do look at the, and I know, Mr. Chair, you were saying that we can't talk to other municipalities, but Central Elgin has some industrial, other industrial land, but there is the 401 corridor and the surrounding Amazon and Ford plant that we know is, is, has a lot of land acreage that is out of production and considered industrial. And perhaps if there was a regional government or at least a an understanding with the three municipalities of St. Thomas, South Wald and Central Elgin, to first optimize the industrial land that exists, then, you know, perhaps a sharing of taxation base would be the way to go. That's just what we feel as agricultural landowners that might be to lessen the, the competition for our prime industrial land. We realize that again, that there is an open meeting for the official plan, I think, tomorrow night, but we don't, not sure if it touches the zoning. Tom and I did assist and on April 25th on the Central Elgin Rural and Agricultural Public Policy Workshop relating to the official plan, and it was on Zoom, and we did bring up our concerns because of the industrial work that had obviously been done on the roadway on Edgeware Line. And at the time, nothing was said. There was no reaction to our concern and just said, you know, there's nothing going on, whereas, and then we find out that, that, that those 600 acres of Central Elgin are now sold, and, and most of that land is now being farmed this year, which is in itself a very unfortunate thing. So I guess we, we do have some concerns with the, the changing of the zone as, as the zoning of agricultural lands to industrial lands. Our farm is the next, abutting it, and as Steve was mentioning, the, the whole watershed from those 800 acres will be coming onto our, our 400 acres here, and we have, the Ontario government on one hand has financed a huge 30-acre woodlot here that we are quite concerned will be affected by any wetland area that, that will be affected by any industrial development just west of our farm. So I guess what we're looking for is maybe can we place, that we would like to state our opposition to changing the zoning of the Edgeware Line, Central Elgin acres from agricultural to industrial land, and we also feel that it would be very beneficial if Central Elgin Council, councilors could organize an open public meeting where our concerns and others could be addressed directly in an open discussion forum as soon as possible, so that all these rumors that are rampant could be put to rest and, and the landowners here could get the answers we're seeking.
Okay. Do you have any questions from us, Tom?
I prepared to read a statement at the end of this presentation, which I think will state, state where council's coming from at this time, but, you know, I don't think we have any questions this time.
Okay. We've set our piece.
And you've, you've said it very well. I will recognize, I know for certain that you're all good stewards of the land, so I do appreciate your concerns. I must, council has anything to say? I'm going to read Counselor Krevitz.
I'd just like to state that, you know, there's nothing stopping another municipality from buying up land in another municipality. Currently, the city of St. Thomas owns the land surrounding the St. Thomas Airport. Just because they have, are purchasing lands in the area does not mean there's automatic rezoning or any removal of agricultural land or woodlot. We have woodlot protection through the County of Elgin, which should be noted, and that's something that has to be dealt with in the future. And we also have 800 acres of employment land as it stands right now. We don't have a need for additional land at this point, and if that is something that is required in the future, it's something that Central Elgin, we're going to look after Central Elgin. It's something that we're going to have to work with for Central Elgin. So I just wanted to make that statement, just is the feeling, that's the feeling from my viewpoint, and as indicated, tomorrow evening is the official plan, the five-year official plan review for Central Elgin, and it's something where the, the employment land is identified within the plan. It's something that has been there for years and will remain in that area. So at this point, the 800 additional acres that is being questioned is something that is not in stone. So that's all I'd like to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krevitz. I think, Steve, I think that hand was up earlier on.
Yeah, I, I, quick question, or response to that?
It'd have to be very quick, Steve, very quick.
Sure. Well, I just, just wanted to make a statement for the record, I guess, if we can, that as far as I understand, I mean, we've been told explicitly by representatives of City of St. Thomas that the land is being appropriated specifically for heavy industrial use, the 800 acres.
And I cannot comment on what the city's doing. At this time, I'm going to read the release. On June 8th, 2022, the City of St. Thomas, the City of St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation, issued a joint press release entitled "City of St. Thomas Assembles Land for Mega Site Development." Subsequently, this information was widely reported in local media outlets with statements attributed to the City of St. Thomas, Mayor Joe Preston, and City of St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation Chief Executive Officer Sean Dyke. Media reports with statements from City of St. Thomas spokespersons identified the lands generally as between Highbury Ave, Ron McNeil Line, Yarmouth Center Road, and the South Edgeware Road on Open Road allowance. The majority of these lands are located within the geographical boundaries of the Municipality of Central Elgin. These lands within the Municipality of Central Elgin have land use designations of agriculture, natural hazard, and natural heritage in the Municipality of Central Elgin official plan. In Ontario, land use designations may only be altered pursuant to the Planning Act 1990. The agricultural lands identified by the City of St. Thomas are directly north of approximately 800 acres of unutilized employment lands entirely within the Municipality of Central Elgin, designated as major industrial and commercial industrial in Municipality of Central Elgin official plan. The Municipality of Central Elgin, Elgin County, the private landowners of the Central Elgin employment lands have worked diligently since 2019 to submit these employment lands to the Provincial Job Site Challenge for potential mega site development opportunities. The Municipality of Central Elgin's been committed to establishing the Municipality of Central Elgin employment lands as a key industrial and commercial development since 1999 with East Side Development Area Plan. This includes a joint East Side Development Area Environmental Assessment and Master Sanitary Servicing Plan with the City of St. Thomas. Municipality of Central Elgin remains committed to establishing the Central Elgin East Side Development Area Employment Lands as a key industrial and commercial development to bring jobs to the community and diversify the Municipality of Central Elgin and Elgin County tax base to facilitate local economic growth and prosperity. During significant economic development opportunity considerations, the federal and/or provincial government may utilize various mechanisms, inclusive of communication embargoes, non-disclosure agreements, to protect the confidentiality of certain information related to a potential economic development opportunity. To have a seat at the table and be able to have access to information that is confidential, municipality and its officials may be required to acknowledge and comply with the federal and/or provincial council government communication embargoes and non-disclosure agreements. This process allows the council municipality access to confidential information to represent the public and to consider the well-being and best interests of the municipality, a fundamental principle of the Municipal Act 2001. Conversely, the process for municipal restructuring or boundary adjustment that alters the geographical boundaries of the municipality is a public process as outlined within the Municipal Act 2001. That public process includes notice to the public and a public consultation meeting on the potential restructuring proposal. The Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin remains committed to representing the public and to considering the well-being and interests of the municipality, including local economic growth and prosperity, with consideration for the Municipality of Central Elgin official plan, the Municipality of Central Elgin strategic plan. Thank you. This time, I'd like to entertain the motion to receive.
Mr. Chair, motion reads, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that the delegation respecting concerns about industrial development, loss of prime farmland, and the use of non-disclosure agreements made by Stephen Greidennis, Tom Martin, and Diane Dubois dated July the 19th, 2022 be received as information.
No further questions. Please call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And again, thank you for our delegation. I appreciate your comments. We will move on to our second delegation of the day. It's from County of Elgin concerning economic development. And I believe we have Carolyn, Carolyn Cron here. Carolyn, welcome. The floor is yours whenever you're ready. Can you hear us, Carolyn?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear us now?
We can hear you very good. Go ahead and welcome.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Marks. Through you to council, we are excited to be here today to introduce our new economic development and tourism team. There have been a few changes to our team over the past few years, and we would like to reintroduce ourselves and let you know that we're here to support Central Elgin as you build a strong local economy and vibrant communities. Now, we did prepare a presentation. I don't know if we can share that on the screen or if you can see that before you.
Mr. Chair, so I'm going to remove Carolyn and then put her back in as a panelist, and then she'll be able to share.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I think it is visible as possible.
We can see the screen now, Carolyn. I think you're muted, maybe.
Oh, we are unmuted now. Sorry about that. So this is our new economic development and tourism team, and as a lifelong resident of Elgin County, I am pleased to serve my community as the interim manager of economic development and tourism. I have been with the County of Elgin since 2015 and have a background in library and legislative services. In fact, I started my municipal career at the Port Stanley Library, and I'm passionate about public service and am committed to working with our community partners to make Elgin County a great place to live, work, and play. And we also have Delaney Leach. She is our business enterprise facilitator, and we are excited to welcome her to the team. Delaney brings with her years of public service experience from her role as executive assistant to MPP Jeff Urick, and Delaney has hit the ground running, and she has been out and about in the community and already connecting with local businesses. And then finally, we have Lindsay Duncan. She is also a lifelong resident of Elgin County, and she's been with the department since 2009 and has a passion for all things tourism in Elgin County. Lindsay is a part of the Central Elgin Events Committee, and she would love to connect with any of you to hear ideas on campaigns and promotions. One of our current projects is creating a series of videos on events in Elgin County, and there will be a videographer coming out to the Calypso Long Weekend in Port Stanley. So we have been working together over the past few months to develop a new strategy for the department. The concept behind this strategy is to change the way we do economic development in Elgin County. The new strategy centers around people, engaging with entrepreneurs, strengthening and leveraging partnerships, and responding to what we learn from them. As outlined in the strategy, the three goals of the plan are to reengage, reimagine, and rebuild. We want to get out there and engage our local community, learn about their needs, let them know about the services we offer, and connect them to other relevant resources. The goal is to build a network of entrepreneurs that can work together to grow their businesses and attract new investments to Elgin County. So based on what we learn, we will reimagine the services that we offer and working in collaboration with you, our local municipal partners, we will rebuild how we do economic development in Elgin County. Now, as a part of our new strategy, we have this new position of business enterprise facilitator, and with this new position, we will, we are committed to cultivating and maintaining a network of direct contacts through regular community visits and partner referrals, and Delaney has already been out there connecting with, with local businesses and will provide assistance in overcoming challenges and work with other agencies, local municipal partners, and organizations to provide creative solutions to problems. We're also committed to assisting businesses and finding and applying for support resources, and this will include our newly reimagined Elgin incentives program, and then leveraging the county's networks and online presence to showcase Elgin's business community and local opportunities and support operators with marketing and promotion. And the second part of the department is tourism, and Lindsay, along with her summer students, works on a number of promotional and product development campaigns, including the Official Visitors Guide, the Tourism Finage Program, Savor Elgin, Elgin Lakeshore, Cycle Elgin, Fall for Elgin, Shop Elgin, the Maple Syrup Trail, and many more. So throughout the year, staff attend community events and trade shows to promote Elgin County as a great place to live, work, and play. And during the summer months, we also have our tourism students who staff the two tourism centers in Port Stanley and Port Urwell. So we are committed to increasing our communications with tourism businesses in all municipalities through in-person visits, e-blasts, and phone conversations. Shoulder season promotion is also a top priority with increased awareness of our fall and winter activities happening throughout Elgin County. So we'd like to build on and create new campaigns such as Fall for Elgin and Winter in Elgin. And now, we are excited to share with you our Welcome Home video campaign. As part of this campaign, we have created seven short videos that feature each of our local municipalities within Elgin County. These videos will be featured on our social media throughout the summer, and we will highlight a different municipality each week. The theme of these videos is Welcome Home, and they focus on the experiences that make a place feel like home. With these videos, we would like to encourage residents to explore their own communities and to feel a sense of pride for where they live, work, and play. So now I'm going to try to play the Central Elgin video. Maybe you can let me know if this, can you all see the video there?
Yes, we can.
All right. And let me know if you can hear it as well once I start.
We're not getting volume.
If you, Mr. Mayor, if there is technical difficulties, we'd obviously be shared in our host afterwards.
Yes, for sure. Carolyn, we didn't seem to get the volume, but we'll make sure it's posted.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. The video is on YouTube, so you can share that link, and we'll also be sharing that video with staff so that you can use that video on your website, share it on your social media, and then also use it at local events or to play in your local arenas. And I'd also like to encourage you to check out our Facebook page throughout the summer to see all the other local municipal videos. And thank you again for the opportunity to talk to you today and let you know about some of the things that are going on in economic development and tourism, and with that, I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Carolyn. Do we have any questions, all in the Florida council? I'm not seeing any questions, Carolyn, but I know I can speak on behalf of the mayor and myself, and certainly the rest of council. We're very excited the good work you, you and your team are doing, so continue to doing it, and thank you for coming, talking to us today.
Thank you so much.
Have a good rest of the day. We will move on. Correspondence? Oh, yes, sir. Please read the motion.
And motion reads, Madam, sorry, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that the presentation made by Carolyn Cron, interim manager of economic development and tourism regarding Elgin County Economic Development and Tourism Strategy for the 2022 to 2025 years be received for information. Regarding Elgin County Economic Development and Tourism Strategy for the 2022 to 2025 years be received for information.
If there's no question, please call a vote.
Counselor Rowe? Yes, Counselor Cravitz.
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to correspondence requiring action. SEO eight two two, 2022, Calypso. Go ahead.
You, Mayor Marks, the council just wanted to provide an update that this morning, the Calypso Coordinator contacted the municipality. To address a few of the things within the report specifically, there won't be vendors, there will be community displaying Glover Park. So that would be the Lioness Club Terrace Lodge Fundraising Committee, Elgin County, that sort of thing. So that addresses the one concern. The historical display will move locations from Office Park to the Legion. It's, it's staff position, council was thought to consider the end grant the approval for the staying overnight with the equipment to protect that. And also they've advised, event insurance has been applied for, they're just waiting to receive the certificate. However, the remaining requests within the report would stay.
Thank you for that information. Does council have any questions, comments? Counselor Fair?
Just which remaining request is still outstanding?
To you, Mr. Chair, there is the $5,000 request for financial assistance for the insurance cost. And the ability to camp, but it's really just stay overnight with the equipment for the living history display. So that would be the outstanding and, and staff, staff would be comfortable saying that. What the commitments made this morning, the remaining items. Be addressed based on council's previous direction.
All right, and that requires action. Go ahead.
One other question, are you saying that they are going to have the 5,000 available or they're not?
To you, Mr. Chair. The Calypso Committee is requesting council to provide $5,000 for insurance. It's our understanding based on this morning that they have made application for said insurance, however, the request remains for $5,000.
So that's a decision we need to make.
To you, Mr. Chair, the decision on the overnight camping, the decision on $5,000 and then. You know, the assumption is if you approve those things that you would approve the event going forward, even though the previous timeline had passed.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, just for clarity, the historical display is going to be at the Legion. So is that when the camping is also expected to take place? In front of the Legion to the north?
To you, to you, to Chair, that's our understanding, yes.
Decision we have really is the $5,000.
And overnight camping, yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I. I don't really have an issue with the overnight camping because it is for a special event, but I think that should definitely be noted. That it is not common practice to do that in the middle of the village or anywhere else within Central Elgin. What is a bit problematic for me is the request for the donation, especially knowing that August 1st is basically a week and a half away. There are a lot of events that go on in Central Elgin and. I think one thing that is lacking with in this or for this council is a, is a bylaw that formally states what the. Municipality will fund, because without that, we are going to be inundated with all of these things. So that's one thing that I will probably have a little bit of difficulty. Yes.
Thank you for that. I haven't been involved in the discussions, but I understand. So with the two-year absence, but this time around, the insurance costs have increased dramatically. Is that correct?
To you, Mr. Chair, our understanding is insurance costs are up from 2019. However, the specifics of that were not involved. Is this private insurance from municipal experience? As councils aware, insurance costs have got half the, that's what the sector is doing right now.
Thank you for making sure. I heard that it's gone up dramatically, which is believable. But we're here to make a decision. This is volunteer-led. Counselor Fair?
If, if we were to, from council, if we were to give the 5,000 or approve the 5,000. Wouldn't it generate much more economic spinoff and dollars than the 5,000 that we'd be putting in to support it? I would think so, but I guess we can't get an answer.
Sally, you have your hand up.
Yes, traditionally, we have paid for the insurance for the Port Stanley Dickens Day Parade and for the. Parade in Belmont, et cetera. That was something we have done in the past. And I think we helped, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we helped with the, when they used to have the. Other celebration in Port Stanley with insurance. So maybe staff could let us know exactly what. I know we used to put it in the budget for insurance for those in the grants.
To you, Mr. Chair, in the past year, I believe the municipality has contributed. Repayments after the fact to the two parades and the amounts of approximately $309 each.
You know, I can see it as a investment in the village economic development, if you will. They are struggling to get out of past two years. And I also realize we have good stewards of our finances, but. We are tasked with making the decision. So further comments? Counselor Cravitz?
As far as the 5 million liability, does it make a difference, much of a difference if it's lower to 2 million liability that's required by the municipality? Or why is the 5 million being asked by the municipality as opposed to 2 million liability?
To you, Mr. Chair, on the recommendation of our insurer, that's been the standard we've held for events that the municipality's name is an additional insured. And that's the standard for the other events. As for if it changes premium, you know, it would be assumed certainly it would have an impact on the premium. However, again, we're not the one obtaining the vote for the insurance.
Mayor Mark, do you have another comment?
Yes, I'm, I'm curious as to why it's $5,000, because it's never been anywhere near that high for the 5 million coverage. And I don't know if that's a quote or is that just asking for that amount of money? I mean, I would like to know exactly what the insurance is going to cost, because I would be supportive of helping provide insurance, but. Cost wise, but I would like to know exactly what it's going to cost.
To you, Mr. Chair, the Calypso organizers have advised the policy is $11,880 with tax included.
So it's, it's a substantial amount of money. Go ahead, Counselor Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask if it was to be supported, where does that money come from? Because it is an unbudgeted amount.
To you, Mr. Chair, obviously, council would allocate that, but staff would suggest the council economic development line item of the budget. However, just for clarity, there was $0 budgeted in that account, so we're just factoring into the overall variance.
You know, I sympathize, they've been down for two years, so they're like a lot of organizations. They're starting up again, struggling, probably down a lot of volunteers, et cetera. So I, I'm in favor of supporting this. And like I said, I'm keenly aware of our tax dollars, but I. $5,000 to help stimulate things in Port Stanley from where they've been, I, I can support that. It's only my personal opinion. Further questions, comments? Sooner or later, someone's going to have to make a motion to move for or against this. I guess if we don't do this, that basically shut down the Calypso?
To you, Mr. Chair, I think that would, that would be a consideration for sure.
Counselor Fair?
I'd be quite willing to make a motion that we agree to their terms and advance the funds.
Do we have a second or then we can discuss it further?
I'm willing to second that, Sally.
Okay, we have a mover and a second. Would you like it read again or further discussion or are you ready to vote? Please read it.
The motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Mayor Martin, that reports CE O eight twenty-two B, 2022 Calypso Festival received for information. Be received for information and that the living history display be permitted to camp overnight to monitor equipment safely as a requirement of an approved special event. And that council approved the one-time $5,000 contribution for Calypso Insurance from the council economic development budget.
All right, please call the vote.
Counselor Rowe? No. Counselor Cravitz?
No.
Counselor Cook?
No.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes. A tie vote, the motion is repeated. Counselor Fair?
Can I ask one question in regards to that? If they had those funds this afternoon, would it, would it be a go in spite of this vote?
I would hope so.
To you, Mr. Chair, yeah, that's our understanding. I think, you know, if you're going to do a second resolution, if you had considered the. Camping overnight, I think that's still germane to the discussion, but that's our understanding. If they had the funds, it would be a go as long as council approves it.
They'll have the funds.
Yeah, make the motion up. So I'd just make a motion that we amend prior to say about camping overnight.
Moved, so to you, Mr. Chair, it'd be the same motion, just take out the one recital about the funds. Is that okay to use, Counselor Fair? Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, may I read the motion?
Please, please do.
The report SE O eight twenty-two, read, 2022 Calypso Festival be received for information and that the living history display be permitted to camp overnight to monitor equipment solely as a requirement of an approved special event. Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Chair.
All right, good discussion. We ended in happy note. Thank you. We'll move on for correspondence, receive for information. From Kettle Creek or from Catfish Creek Conservation Authority. Is that just to be received or?
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that corresponds, item number one, be received as information filed.
Questions, comments, or ready for the vote? Go ahead.
Counselor Rowe? Yes, Counselor Cravitz.
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. We will move on to reports. First one, Central Elgin Planning Office. CEP thirty-four twenty-two consent application, eight six eight four Centennial Road, Janet Ray Williamson. Where am I? Is that you, Kevin? Have a motion, please read it.
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that reports CEP thirty-four twenty-two reconsent application, eighty-six eighty-four Centennial Road. Receive for information and that council has no objections to consent application, E E eight twenty-one, Janet Ray Williamson. Eighty-six eighty-four Centennial Road, subject to the following recommending conditions. The severed land be merged entitled with the abutting lot, eight six six two Centennial Road. That subsection three or five of section fifty of the Planning Act RSO nineteen hundred ninety as amended. Shall apply to any subsequent conveyance for transaction involving the subject lands. The solicitor for the applicant is to provide an undertaking whereby they inform the committee in writing that the lands are being conveyed to an abutting property owner. And thus a merger title will take place, which merger shall include all interest held inclusive or mortgagees' interests. The municipality of Central Elgin be provided with a copy of the reference plan and a drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense.
Thank you. Do we have any questions before we vote? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no issue with the, the request because of the adjustment, but wasn't, what wasn't quite clear to me was. In simple terms, the retained lot then is now going to be deeper than it was before. And if that is the case, I, and I'm just not clear why the frontage on the severed lot is not in the same position if the issue is road widening.
Mr. McClure, can you answer that?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Marks, through you to Counselor Rowe. Yes, so the, the application itself was previously approved and then as part of that. Requirement for road widening, when the survey was done, the lot area was deficient. Uh, because when they took off the portion of lands that fronted onto Centennial, it made the overall size of the lot too small. So they had to guess originally come forward to request a variance or to, to allow for smaller lot sides, which staff was not supportive of. Uh, given the lack of servicing in, in the area. And so what they've done is, yes, they've increased it on the, the easternly side to ensure that the parcel still meets. The lot area requirements from, for the bylaw.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McClure, but what about the severed lot itself? Because they look to be identically shaped on the map. So why is that issue not also required to be made on that severed lot?
Uh, to follow up on that, the, so if you may recall from the original application, essentially the larger portion of property to the east of the. Of the severed lot is being added to the other parcel. So that's where the, the requirement for the merger is to take place. So you end up having what is more or less a flag-like, uh, flag-like shop, uh, lot. And a block, which is the smaller parcel. So by adding for those severed lands or the retained, so the severed lands to the south. To add on to that, that rear end of that portion, it's not, it's not an issue for lot coverage or sorry, lot size. Because the lands extend way further to the east. Uh, it's only those, only that severed parcel that is that small kind of, I guess, regular lot shape. That is required to, to add those lands to the, um, to the, to the east. Um, just, just trying to see if you look at again, page one of the, of the report, the severed and the retained. Uh, ultimately, yes, the, the severed portion, there's a, that eight, just trying to zoom in here. Yeah, the eight, uh, thousand eight hundred and sixty-two, uh, there's a portion being added to the rear of that and the property to the north. That's where the, there's that larger block to the rear that's being merged to have the overall larger parcel. So you don't, you don't have to worry about the deficient lot area.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McClure. That is, that makes sense then. I was actually under the impression that the largest sort of eastern portion, that biggest rectangular piece was actually going to be severed. Or, or attached to the property to the south of it, not that severed lot to the west. So understanding what you just said, then yes, that makes sense.
All right.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? If not, allow, vote please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks? Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Uh, next, we have a report from our C A O. Uh, C A O two-four-two-two Advisory Board Committee Policy. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think everything's outlined within the report. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Questions, comments? Fairly straightforward? Okay. Motion?
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Row, that report C E O twenty-four twenty-two be advisory board and committee policy be received for information, and that staff be directed to bring forward an advisory board and committee policy bylaw for council consideration.
Please call the vote.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Um, nothing from our Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. Uh, move on to our Director of Financial Services Treasurer. First is, uh, D F S two-five-two-two Construction, the Union Street Park Bathrooms. Go ahead, question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I do see this work in the twenty-fourteen Recreation Master Plan for the comment to do the work, and I, and I truly believe that it is the right thing to do, and the commitment is made in the past to follow it through to its completion. But when I was looking at that master plan, it did, uh, well, let me just step back for one second, because it, there's probably been conversations that have gone on long before this, and I don't recollect any conversations about Union Street Park except for the, uh, tendering of the playground equipment and the fitness equipment. Um, so I would have to say this is the first time that I was aware of the, the washroom facility, which, you know, is perhaps my responsibility. However, when I look at the Recreation Master Plan, there is on, um, page sixty-one, as it was pointed out to me, a comment that the Belmont community would be able to have, you know, potential washrooms at this. But the question that was outstanding to me was, it was to work with the hub and the rest of the community to, to whether that makes sense or not, and a half million dollars on two, two washrooms, I guess, in a storage facility with no services, because those services are also part of this, this particular tender. Um, I'm not sure that the hub exists anymore, so I don't know whether, you know, what those conversations looked like in the past. Um, so again, I'm kind of on the, on the fence with this one as well, just because it was committed to, so happy to see things through to the end, um, but would like to understand if it's really, uh, meant to be there, because as a neighborhood park, there's three levels of park in the Recreation Master Plan, and that neighborhood park, uh, does not indicate washrooms. So I just want to make sure that we're spending a half a million dollars wisely.
Go ahead. Do you, Mr. Chair, absolutely thought question. Uh, this is, uh, this is part of us, it's not just this as the park, it's part of the overall enhancement to the park, uh, similar in scale, uh, in total cost to the Eastwood Park, and this is, uh, this is a project that the scope was submitted in the grants, uh, and, you know, that's outstanding still on that, but over seventy percent of this entire project, including all the various com- uh, components, is funded, uh, is, is funded through that grant program. So that's kind of the context to how we got to this point and understanding, yes, that, uh, it was an in-year grant application based on council's existing documents, and the timing on announcements and whatnot has hampered the ability to maybe communicate, in its entirety on this project, but it's part of a significant and holistic overall enhancement to that Union Street Park that will kind of serve as a hub for the Belmont area, connecting, uh, some of the developments to the downtown and integrate. I would offer that. I'm sure Mr. Brooks could offer even more detail on it, but that's the concept behind it.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yes, as knowing, I guess, that it was part of the scope in order to get the grant funding for the totality of that particular work, I do not have an issue with that, because seventy percent of, of that expense is being provided for elsewhere, which is a phenomenal twin for the municipality. So, thank you.
Further comments? Ready for the vote?
Yep. The motion.
Motion, please.
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Row, seconded by Counselor Fair, that report D F S twenty-five twenty-two be requests for tenders twenty twenty-two, twenty construction of the Union Street Park bathrooms be received for information, that the council of the corporation, Central Alden accept the tender of P K Construction for the twenty twenty-two, twenty construction of the bathrooms to the amount of four hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars, plus all applicable taxes, and that staff be directed to proceed in accordance with report D M S twenty-five twenty-two.
Please call the vote.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Next, um, request for tenders for the two thousand twenty-two twenty-five Belmont Arena Elevator Edition. Some more good news for Belmont. Wants to speak to this?
To you, Mr. Chair. Generally, our practice has been, unless there's questions, we just, uh, have counsel or I can.
Okay. Read the motion, please.
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Row, that report D F S twenty-six twenty-two, re-request for tenders twenty twenty-two twenty-five Belmont Arena Elevator Edition, be received for information, and that the council of the corporation, of the municipality of Central Alden accept the tender of Ton construction limited for the twenty twenty-two twenty-five Belmont Arena Elevator Edition, the amount of forty, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and plus all of the local taxes, and that staff be directed to proceed in accordance with report D F S twenty-six twenty-two.
Please call the vote.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Uh, second quarter variance report. Read the motion, please.
Yep, motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Row, seconded by Counselor Fair, that report D F S twenty-seven twenty-two, read, twenty twenty-two second quarter variance report be received for information.
Thank you. Comments? Okay, I'll call the vote, please.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Has it gone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And we'll go on to, uh, our monthly alarm activities report for June.
Go ahead. Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Row, that report F S O eight twenty-two, the monthly alarm activities report, June of twenty twenty-two, be received for information.
Questions, comments? Call the vote, please.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Again, thank you. Um, June two thousand twenty-two monthly building report. Read the motion.
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Row, seconded by Counselor Fair, that report A M D S nineteen twenty-two, read, June twenty twenty-two monthly building report, be received for information.
Questions, comments? Not seeing any, please call the vote.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Move on to June two thousand twenty-two monthly bylaw report. Go ahead.
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Row, that report A M D S twenty twenty-two, read, June twenty twenty-two monthly bylaw report, be received for information.
Question, Counselor Fair?
I thought we'd have to say, I'm, I'm just wondering on the other bylaws area that appeared a, a number of months ago, I, I'm just wondering what the process is between, and what they are actually, and what the process is between verbal warning, written warnings, and actually laying charges, because I see generally in bylaws, it's usually a verbal warning or discussion and a resolution, and I'm just wondering, uh, what, what the reasoning for it and, and what was, and as far as the charges laid, what's the background on that?
Mr. Parent?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So other bylaw complaints constitute the other regulatory bylaws that the municipality has, so, uh, I believe this question was asked previously, but would be property standards, noise bylaw, uh, those types of bylaws. With respect to the second question, there's been, uh, verbal warning, written warning, and charges laid. So some of those bylaws, uh, we would actually just discuss the issue with the, with the resident or the member of the public, uh, to try to get compliance with, with the bylaw that, uh, we're dealing with. And remember, first and foremost, with respect to bylaw, uh, enforcement, first goal is to try to get compliance with the applicable bylaw, rather than just to issue an order or issue a charge. Next step, if, uh, a verbal warning was not producing the, the, you know, requirements for compliance with the, the bylaw, that we would then issue a written warning or a notice to comply, and then if that was, uh, did not gain any fruition, then we would go to the next step and lay charges under the bylaw.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Go ahead. I don't know, I think so that, that one charge that was laid was through all those levels of, uh, process?
Uh, I, I'd have to look, but, uh, typically, yes.
Go ahead.
To you, Madam Mayor. If I may just jump in, council did approve a municipal law enforcement policy, and the municipal law enforcement policy lays out the general process. However, there's not a set process that says X, Y, Z, each, each situation, different tactics in the policy may be utilized, so, you, you know, it's not really, uh, possible for us to look at one complaint on the spot and say, this was the exact process. We use our tracking system, we'd be able to do that, but all bylaw enforcement is in accordance with council's approved policy.
Go ahead. And then the, the last question, so if, if a counselor was going to look at that charges laid one, could we, uh, access, uh, the process that was followed on that?
I'll just jump in. Council's approved, uh, processes that, uh, there's components in that limits council's ability to involve, to protect the process, and then we're reporting back, it's actually in the policy of quarterly reports, like, because the municipality has therapy done monthly. That's why these enhanced monthly reports have been provided, but there's a concerted effort for council to set a policy for municipal law enforcement and to staff to carry out those duties under the policy and not have council directing individual enforcement activities.
Go ahead. Then my final question, then, so I take it from possibly the lack of answers that, that process that Mr. Parent, uh, suggested may or may not have happened in this situation?
To you, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The policy that council has passed is followed in all enforcement processes, and if council would like to change that process, they simply need to change the municipal law enforcement policy. I think it's, it, it, it borders on a FIPA violations for discussing individual bylaw complaints in open session, right? Specifically within council's approved policy, it contemplates that exactly, so I think if council would like to change the municipal law enforcement policy to have more hand in that, that it would be appropriate for council to change that policy.
Okay, again, the last, uh, I'm not saying, I'm not saying change policy, I'm just saying, uh, staff has already chosen to follow certain procedures, and, uh, I'm just saying that it should be applied routinely, uh, according to staff, as Mr. Parent has suggested that they do that, and, uh, I'm just wondering if that was followed generally, and, uh, that would be nice.
Mr. Parent, go ahead.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, and to build on, maybe to help clarify Mr. Shipway's comment, is that there is not a set process, A to B to C, with respect to municipal bylaw enforcement staff dealing with a bylaw infraction. It's gonna depend on severity of the, of the, uh, of the bylaw infraction. It, it may be something where someone, for example, a noise complaint, it is, you know, someone's putting or hollering a little bit on the loud side that is keeping up the, the neighbor right next door, so that person gets talked to. It might be the same complaint, a noise bylaw complaint, where there's amplified sound that is disrupting the entire neighborhood. That might go right straight to a written, written warning or a charge. Very sad. But it's all carried out with respect to council's approved.
I go back. Go back to one of the first comments I heard was that at all times, the intent is to try to resolve um, and get a resolution to the problems, and I'm quite confident that's been, um, targeted and worked on. Are we ready to, um, vote on this? Please go ahead.
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Row, that report A M D S twenty twenty-two, read, June twenty twenty-two monthly bylaw report, be received for information.
Further questions? Ready for the vote? Go ahead, please.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. I think we're at bylaws. Let's read the first one.
Taken collectively, Mr. Chair?
Oh, that's a great idea.
First motion, moved by Counselor Row, seconded by Counselor Fair, that bylaws twenty-seven twenty-two, twenty-seven twenty-three, and twenty-seven twenty-five be read a first and a second time.
Counselor Fair?
Sorry, I, I, maybe I'm a little late. I just wonder about discussion. I just wanted to ask one question on the council remuneration. That's okay?
Um, Marissa, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm just wondering, when it, when it says for other events, like seminars and things, uh, I, I know in the past we said we weren't going to be paying council for other, other meetings, but it, it looks, it's so, that would mean that counselors would be paid if it was a seminar that was an all-day event, not a partial day, according to what I read. So is, am I correct in assuming that?
To you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna need to know what component of this you're looking at. All this bylaw does is amalgamate all the previously existing and enforced council policies into one location and removes some from staff H R policies.
Okay, it was three point three point one that I was wondering about.
Yes, that, through you, Mr. Chair, that's the existing policy that had been in place and not changed.
No changes.
For a significant period of time.
Thank you. Just amalgamate. Okay, answer that?
Yes.
Um, ready to vote? Please call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Sorry.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries? Next motion on the bylaws?
Go ahead.
Moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Row, that bylaws twenty-seven twenty-two, twenty-seven twenty-three, and twenty-seven twenty-five be read a third time and finally passed.
Please call the vote.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. We're down to public notice. Uh, proposed official plan amendment, municipality of Central Alden, five-year official plan update at tomorrow night, so we're, to all tune in who can. Do you like to speak to that, or is it just public notice?
Just notice, and through you, Mr. Chair, council has.
No questions on that? You don't need to vote on that, just. And we're at, um, motions and notes and motion. Other business? Yeah, I guess we're at the point where we go into closed session. Do you have a motion for that, please?
Motion reads, Chair, moved by Counselor Row, seconded by Counselor Fair, that council proceed into closed session at two oh nine P M in order to address a matter pertaining to personal matters of, 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 of individual, including municipal or local board employees, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied in negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board, and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications for that purpose. and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications for that purpose.
Anyone like that repeated? Um, please call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks, say hi.
All right, call immediately back to order, and note that we are back in open session. Um. Yes. Call them.
First, your first motion, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that closed session, item number two, be received disinformation, and staff proceed as directed by council.
Uh, call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Continue on.
Next motion, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that closed session, item number three, be received disinformation, and that staff proceed as directed by council.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you.
Confirmatory bylaw?
Go ahead.
Motion reads, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that bylaw twenty seven twenty four be read a first and a second time.
Go ahead.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you.
Next motion on the confirmatory bylaw?
Go ahead.
Moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that bylaw twenty seven twenty four be read a third time and finally passed.
All the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
One more item?
Motion reads, Mr. Chair, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that the regular meeting of council dated Tuesday, July the nineteenth, twenty twenty two, be adjourned at two twenty eight P M, and the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Thursday, August the eighteenth, twenty twenty two, at one P M, at the Masonic Center of Alton.
I'll go ahead and call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
We are adjourned, as always, saying.